Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to every power which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Delegation by Harvest Community Church. Not here, okay. Roll call, please.
Dosher, McArdle, Barrington, Allen, Charx, Smith, Sabers, Rice.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Say here. Approval consent agenda items, items printed consent agenda may be removed by council member for discussion beginning formal agenda items, is there anything you wish to remove? Anything you wish to discuss? Motion by Mr. McArdle.
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Barrington, Allen, Charx, Smith, Sabers, Rice, Dosher, McArdle.
Motion carries. Citizens input, if you need to address mayor, members city council on item that is not on the agenda excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes, items will be considered but no act will be taken this time. Mr. Bender, want to caution you, please do not use foul language when you're talking up here.
We'll see what happens.
All right, thank you.
So, I went to a CASA event this weekend, I got this koozie, court appointed special advocates for children, now, I wonder how many of these kids come from families that are decimated by alcoholism, but I'm sure these are for pop. So, I was sitting at my table, straight line of sight, there's a certain state's attorney that I admittedly have some animosity towards. To his left, there's a local lawyer, and on the other side of the lawyer is his wife, I'll call her B, she's a sweetheart. B is also a school board member here in Mitchell, state's attorney, lawyer, school board member, I'm curious. So, I would say I was creeping, straight line of sight, so in my defense, they were just right there, okay? So, a couple of weeks ago, the lawyer asked me to pump his septic tank in a property of his that he was buying, it's a beautiful place with a raised concrete patio. Now, I'm appreciative of being the lawyer's patronage, so I want to get him a shot. Now, I haven't had a drink in a while, yet I, in 20 years, yet I have, I do consider myself an alcoholic, so I can still spot one when I see one. The state's attorney, he has a reputation. It's just common knowledge around town that he's an alcoholic. I'm not judging, I'm just saying, he's the one that needs to admit it. So, I bought all three of them a shot, crowning peach. The lawyer gave me a fist bump, it took him a second, it was meant to be insulting, yes, I can be childish, and I laughed, and my friends laughed about it. I'm pretty sure they didn't take the shots, but the state's attorney had six empty Pabst Blue Ribbon sitting in front of him. No, I wasn't there long, so I only seen him finish two of them, but these Pabst Blue Ribbon, sitting at a CASA event, six of them empty, red flag. But I noticed the state's attorney is, and seems to be in charge of a minor child, seems to be about 10 to 12. I got in my truck, I'm about ready to leave, and it dawns on me that if he is truly a real alcoholic, and he's in charge of this little girl, I'm betting that he'll have no problems endangering this child with, while he drives her home regardless of his blood alcohol content. I think it's called child endangerment, but I'm not a state's attorney. My gut instinct, my intuition was right. Sure enough, little girl walks out with the state's attorney, and they jump in his truck together. From my perspective, he was driving like he was impaired, so I called the cops. My statements are on record, now, I don't care if he kills himself, it's preferable to him killing that little girl or someone else, and I think our community should hold Jim Misskimmens to a higher standard. Davidson County State's Attorney drinking and driving with a minor child, didn't a Mitchell police officer have a DUI recently? Must be a culture thing within our justice system here. Now, I struggled with what to say tonight, see, I'm just a lowly slure cleaner, all I know is crap. So, I prayed to God, lowercase. I already knew in my heart, but I needed his guidance, his reassurance, I needed him to tell me I was doing the right thing. See, God talks to me, and he strengthened my resolve, and he said, Rita, go forth with certainty. So, I'm 100% positive when I tell you that Jim Misskimmens is a piece of shit.
Thank you, Mr. Bender. I would recommend you go to the county commission and discuss with them. Anybody else wish to address council?
He does represent this community.
He does. Nobody else wishes to address council? Okay.
I would like to say something.
Oh, yep.
Hi, my name is John Weiser. My wife and I own two pieces of commercial property on Fifth Avenue, and we made it through the street project. I just have a couple questions. We've got curb stops that have not been addressed, and I was told that Manning is going to address them. Two of them are underground yet, below the dirt line, one of them is about 6'8" above the dirt line, are they going to come back?
This is commentary, so you can comment on however you want, it's not question and answer for you.
Okay. I also have a question, my wife owns the business at 114 West Fifth. They put in a sidewalk and a junction box, and that junction box is going to be a hazard as far as slip, fall, someone's going to step on it. It is such a steep grade coming off of the sidewalk going to the alley, and if you go into my wife's shop, there's two sets of stairs. It is no longer handicap accessible. There wasn't any cones there a while back because somebody came along and tripped over these cones. My concern is, what's going to go on with this as far as liability? Somebody comes along, steps on that sidewalk and goes down, I just wanted to make sure that it was on the cities, on this meeting, as far as if somebody goes down, that the city is going to be liable for this, because it's ridiculous. I would like every one of you guys to drive by that piece of property and look at that sidewalk and say, man, I want to get my hair cut at that place because it's got, or I'm not going to get my hair cut at that place because it's pretty tough to get access into that building. I don't understand why that sidewalk is so high. It's probably about 8 to 10 inches too high, and so, from my wife's property to the curb is a major slope, major grade, and I talked with the engineer, they came down. Now, they're going to put handrails on this piece of sidewalk that's going to be tough for snow removal. You know, when we, when they started the meeting, it was supposed to be open communication, they're going to let everybody know what's going on, how the street is going to progress. Nobody said this was going to be 8 inches higher than the, and what happened is they lowered the street, I get that, but nobody told us that we were going to have to have this steep grade going off of the sidewalk like that. That's my major concern, is someone's going to fall, someone's going to get hurt, I guarantee you. And basically, that is about it, but I just, it's got to be addressed, someone's going to get hurt. And it's ridiculous, because this is a brand new street that went in, this, there should have been better design, there should have been a better design as far as setting up that sidewalk, but you got to look at it. I can't take pictures, pictures do not show any justice to what this looks like, but I'm sickened by it, I mean, it's ridiculous.
That's your time, thank you.
What's the name of you, the business?
It's the haircut place.
It's a center hut on 114 West Fifth. Drive by there, you check it out and see if you guys think that would be acceptable for you.
Thank you for your comment, your time's done, thank you.
Council Mayor Doug Greenway, Director of the Corn Palace. Next week is our Parade of Lights and Christmas at the Palace, so I just want to invite all of you members and the community. The Christmas at the Palace is a long, a long time event, Santa Claus will be here, treats for kids and adults, some kids activities, the municipal band will be playing, we've got some elementary kids will be singing carols on the Plaza stage. That'll run 4:30 to 6:30 on Tuesday night, and then the Parade of Light, which is the Mitchell Main Street event, starts at 7 o'clock, so we invite the community down, there's still time to get floats enrolled in the parade too. So, that's the Mitchell Main Street event, so encourage you all to attend, and happy holidays.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else wish to address council? Okay, Board of Adjustment, entertain a motion for City Council recess, City's Board of Adjustment. Motion by Mr. Rice. Second by Mrs. Charx. Further discussion? All those favor the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close nay, motion carried. Hearing and action on application for Joni and Josh Rasmussen. Joni and Josh Rasmussen have applied for variance in minimum front yard setback of 8 feet versus 25 feet, side yard setback of 16 feet versus 20 feet to construct a wraparound porch. Move existing front door from the southwest corner of the house to the south side located at 322 South Wisconsin Street, legally described as lots 7 and 8, block 12, railroad addition, city of Mitchell, Davidson County, South Dakota, real property is owned R2, single family. Mr. Jennings.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Planning Commission recommended approval of this, 4-0 with 3 absent. We did receive five responses in favor of this. Currently, they have a corner access into their house, as you can see on the GIS up there. They're proposing to put a 6 foot wide on the south side, and I have it wrapped around 3 foot on the west side there, it'll be an open sided porch with an overhang. They're going to move the door to the south side of the house. It's an older neighborhood of town, the side yard was in compliance before, the front yard was never in compliance once it was built back in the day. There were no concerns from Planning Commission about this. The applicant is here if you have any questions for them at all.
Motion, Colonel. Motion by Mr. Allen. Second by Mr. McArdle, further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? Okay, all those favor the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close nay, motion carried. Hearing and action on application for Gold Key Properties LLC conditional use. Gold Key Properties LLC has applied for this use permit for multifamily dwelling units between 5 and 12, seven dwelling units total on combined lots. Located at 705-707-711 South Davidson Street, legally described as lots 54 through 56 of the overlook addition, city of Mitchell, Davidson County, South Dakota, said property is owned R3, medium density. Mr. Jennings.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Planning Commission recommended approval of this, 4-0 with 3 absent. We did get one response in favor of this project. Did have a question from one of the neighbors called in, concerned about drainage. That'll be dealt with if this is approved through the building permit application portion of it. Currently, they have a single family dwelling on the south, there's a duplex in the middle, and then they're proposing to add a fourplex on the north one. The pictures up there right now are of what the duplex in the middle looks like, this would look similar to this, except it'd be four instead of a duplex, there's going to be two on the east side, two on the backside of it. By combining all the parcels into one, that's what triggered the multifamily to this level. If it were individ, excuse me, by combining it all, it meets the minimum width for lot size, the minimum area for lot size, and maximum coverage is underneath the maximum for that as well. Applicants here, if you have any questions for her or any questions for me, I can answer as well.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second. Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Rice. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? All those favor the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close nay, motion carried. Hearing and action on application for Gold Key Properties LLC variance. Gold Key Properties LLC has applied for variance in minimum front and rear yard setback of 22 feet versus 25 feet for construction of a fourplex with attached garages located at 705 South Davidson Street, legally described as lots 54 through 56 of overlook addition, city of Mitchell, Davidson County, South Dakota, said property is owned R3, medium density. Mr. Jennings.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Planning Commission recommended approval of this as well, 4-0 with 3 absent. Can you go to the site plan view of this, please? The apartments themselves are going to be about 550 to 560 square feet, so that's why they requested the variance for the 3 foot on the front and 3 foot on the back. If he took that out, he'd be taking about 60 feet out of there, so it's just keeping the size bigger. The duplex to the south side has a 23 versus 25 on the roadside, but a 25 on the rear yard setback. Applicants here, if you have any questions for her at all, or I can answer any you have for me as well.
I'll move to approve. Motion by Mr. Rice.
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? All those favor the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close nay, motion carried. Action set date for Board of Adjustment hearing 12-522. Ethan Coop Lumber on behalf of Robert and Sherry Porter have applied for variance permit for an attached garage of 31, 3,136 square feet versus 2,000 square feet located at 5210 Fiala Road, legally described as lot 14 of Fiala's addition in northwest quarter section 4, township 103 North Range 60 West of the 5th, primary, and Davidson County, South Dakota, said property is owned RL.
South and eight.
Motion by Mrs. Charx.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rice. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this one? All those favor the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close nay, motion carried. Action set date for Board of Adjustment hearing 12-522. High Wings LLC has applied for this use permit for alcohol sales onsite located at 405-80250th Street, excuse me, legally described as Kelly Track 1 and subdivision of southwest quarter of the southeast quarter, Kelly Tracks 1A and 2 subdivision of south half of the southeast quarter, west 208.75 feet of the south, 208.75 feet of the southeast quarter, southeast quarter. All in section 36, township 103 North Range 60 West of the 5th, primary, and city of Mitchell, Davidson County, said property is owned UD Urban Development. Motion by Mr. McArdle. Second by Mr. Rice. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? All favor the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close nay, motion carried. Reconvened City Council, entertain a motion for Board of Adjustment during City Council reconvene regular session. Motion, Mr. Rice.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sabers. Further discussion? All those favor the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close nay, motion carried. Action to approve agreement A 202249, Gun Range Project 2023-1 with Civil Design Inc., Mr. Rader.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, the proposed agreement provides a preliminary engineering services by CDI for a potential gun range, location and layout. The proposal includes the evaluation of two sites for the implementation of a 100, 200, 500, and 1,000 yard range, along with some pistol base. Shotgun and trap shooting are not planned for the site. The final deliverable includes a conceptual layout of the selected site preliminary, and a preliminary cost estimate. The final deliverable will also be, or be able to be used for a game fishing parks grant to help fund the project. Staff does recommend City Council approval of the agreement with CDI for a lump sum fee of 11,000 for the described services.
So, how is this different from the current gun range that we have?
It's quite a bit longer, and our current gun range is private use only currently. This would be a public site.
Right. This, our current one is PD and sheriff and highway patrol only. This will be a public site.
The one that is out?
By the dump, yes.
I was thinking of...
That's shotgun, the one out by the 4H grounds is shotgun only. Oh, okay.
This indoor pistol range.
Yes, so, this will be long range.
Correct.
And, Mr.
Mr. Peterson, we do have Arden Peterson with the Game Fishing Parks.
You want to, you want to speak to this a little bit?
Sure. One quick question before, what budget is this coming out of?
It'll be paid for by unused salaries from Public Works.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me come tonight, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Arden Peterson of Game Fishing Parks, mostly here just to try to answer any questions you may have. We've had a couple meetings with some folks here from the city of Mitchell. Last May, we went up and looked at the Watertown range, I don't know how many of you folks have been up there, but it's on the south end of town on the truck bypass. They have 300, 200, some 150 yard ranges there. It's been very well used, it's been a real good thing for the city of Watertown. It's actually owned by the city. We, as Game Fishing Parks, entered into an agreement to work with them through our Pittman Robertson funds to help build the facility, but it is really run and managed by the city of Watertown. That's really a good example to follow. We're also working on a range right now, it's kind of a refurbishing of one up in Huron, it's Isaac Walton League Range up there, and then we got one in for the budget starting next July, working with Beacon Hill in Brookings. Those are all examples that you could take a look at too, but I think it's, would really fit a niche here in the community of Mitchell. It's something that's growing all across the United States where people have, are looking for a place to go out and shoot, whether it's to sight in their gun for deer hunt, or if it's just to go out there and shoot paper. So, with that, I'll try to answer any questions you may have of me.
Is there currently a 1,000 yard in the state?
I think there probably is some private ones, they just, there's one in, by Hot Springs in Fall River County, they just, that one's been in, been, been in, in works for, I don't know, probably 10 or 12 years it's been, out to 600, they just put a berman at 800 yards just in the last, I think, month. You've probably heard some about the Rapid City project, that's still in the works, and that one is proposed to have a range of out to 1,200 yards.
I went up to Watertown when they toured the one up there, would it be a similar look to what Watertown has theirs?
Well, our input would be, we would have our engineering staff look at what would be proposed, but the, the design phase would take a look at that and, and decide along with your representatives, how much room there is, how much length there is for one thing, and how much width there is for how many bays you would have.
So, this is, hi.
Hi.
It's good to see you.
Good to see you.
So, this is under, what department will this?
Parking Rec.
It'll be under Parking Rec, and it's open to the public?
Yep.
I'll move approval.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Turk. Second by Mr. McArdle.
I was going to ask another question.
Just you go right ahead.
What, of the projects that you currently have in place or have funded, what approximately percent, obviously you can't commit to anything tonight, but what, what generally is what we should be expecting?
It, you know, it varies quite a bit. What happened in the Watertown project, that got, came in way under bid, and so, the proposal was, yeah, I think on that project...
We can hope.
I think the project was proposed at maybe 700,000 or something, but it come in way under bid, and the city, so, when, when the project went to bid, it did not have the 200 and 300 yard range in it, because didn't expect that they could afford to do that. When it came in under bid, the city of Watertown added the 200 and 300 on their own outside of the agreement with Game Fishing Parks. I mean, we, we approved it, but we did not have the money budgeted for that. But typically, through most of the Pittman Robertson projects, it's a 75, 25, with 25% locally matched with the 75%. Now, that is always up to taking a look at what we have for funding available, because this, the Pittman Robertson funds does not just do shooting range, that's funding that goes to all of our habitat projects and all of our game production areas, it goes to funding wildlife research and management. So, there's, there's competition across the state for utilization of those funds, so each year we have to take a look at that. The next available budget cycle would be what would come available in about 19 months. So, our F, we're in our FY '23 right now until next July, and then we'll be in the FY '24, which has already been proposed in... FY twenty-four, which has already been proposed and approved by our commission, which will go to the legislature. So the next available funding would be for July of twenty-four. It'd be our FY twenty-five. Yeah. And, and so that would have to go through our internal review and go to our Game Fishing Parks Commission. So it'd be up against potentially other projects, but this would be one that I could say that our agency would look very favorable.
And then one last question. How do you design these to minimize the sound? Cause I know the Watertown one sits right at the edge of, of the city.
Typically, they'll have berms, you know, they'll have an end berm and then side berms, and then there's awful, also baffles that kinda go over it that will protect against escape of bullets on there. But the sound is also sometimes challenging depending on typically of the direction of the, the shots, but there's, there's number of things that can be done to minimize some of the sound as well. And then what they do in, in Watertown is, I think their hours are basically sunrise to sunset, and, you know, so, but you could also put on there different hours if there's different hours when you felt like the sound was gonna be disruptive and, and things like that.
I know talking...
So do they have a full-time person that's there in the city watching over what they're shooting or where they're shooting at, or someone's gotta... Obviously hunters are very safe, most of them.
They do not. I don't know if they've added any personnel when they, when they brought on the range, when they took that under the street department. I, I don't think they do. They don't have somebody out there all the time. They do have cameras available, and it's pretty well policed by the people that are out there. They have garbage cans out there. They have a restroom out there, and I can tell you, it was, every time I've been there, it's been extremely clean.
So they're all members?
They're not actually, it's not actually a membership. That, that's open to the public.
Yep.
There are different facilities that have memberships, like at the Isaac Walton League in Huron or Beacon Hill in Brookings, but the Watertown one does not have a membership.
In talking with the Watertown people, it's directly south of their softball fields and just a little bit west of the soccer fields, and I, we asked about sound, and they said the, the kids look at it as fireworks going off. And I said, "That's kinda cool. Play baseball, you got fireworks going off."
And where's the location for...
For us? We're looking at two. One would be the northwest corner of Kelly property, and the other would be the old city dump. We're not sure which would be the best. Okay? You would get the longer distances on the Kelly property, I believe.
I think so. I think that's correct.
CDI will evaluate that and bring that back, so. If you look at the way they're designed, it's virtually impossible to shoot outside of, of the lanes they give you. The berms are very high, and then they have a series of beams that cross in front of the shooter, so they have to shoot under them. And hopefully, we can maybe get some pictures of that?
Yep.
From Watertown?
Cause visiting Watertown was my first experience at a gun range, and I, I said the same thing, like, I couldn't believe how enclosed it is and how it's, oh, near, I would say impossible to get a bullet out of there. I was, I was surprised when I first saw it.
You'd literally have to shoot, walk downrange, shoot straight up in the air, I think, to get it outside of, of the berms. Very well-designed, very interesting, and, well, not at all what I expected when we went to look at a gun range, so.
And I believe CDI is the firm that helped with the Watertown layout and design.
Yes, and they're also who we were working with in the Huron and Brookings ones as well, and one that didn't actually ended up getting completion. We were working on one with the city of Coleman, but when, when COVID hit, they lost some businesses and had to rethink about their contribution on that. So CDI, and my point is, has had quite a bit of experience with this.
Okay.
And they're only the four lanes, the one-hundred, two-hundred, five-hundred and...
Distances. There's actually numerous lanes at each distance. So it's not four lane. I think Watertown has three or four of the three-hundred.
I, I believe they just have the one three-hundred and maybe one or two two-hundred. They have a lot, a number of one-hundred. One-hundred is the ones that get used the most, and typically on some of the other longer ranges, they'll have gongs up there, so you're not replacing paper, so you can, don't have to have somebody going downrange. And then they'll have, they have a flagging system, so if somebody wants to go downrange, cause they'll have a number of benches there, so they might have multiple shooters. So you can either do that electronically or with a, a flag, like I'm a member at the Garretson Sportsman's Club, and they've got an electronic light that you put on when you wanna go downrange, cause you know, there might be two or three people shooting in the same bay, but you'll just ask them, "Whenever you're done, can I go downrange?" And then they'll put the light on and, and whatnot, so.
Then this would, this would have pistol range as well at the fifty, fifty yarder. Is that what you shoot, Mike? So we would eliminate the range that needs some repair out by the, the garbage dump, and this would take its place, so.
I took some pictures of it. I'll try to find them and send them to you.
Anything else, Mr. Peterson? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address this?
Chuck Oster. I've been around the shooting business in Mitchell for quite a while. We used to run the Fire, Steel Rifle and Pistol Club range out at Morrison's. That has been shut down since two thousand and seven, so we've been searching and hoping for a long time. Normally speaking, you can find something if you look hard enough within thirty to forty miles. Other than that, it's sixty-plus miles, and it's not easy to accommodate. I just wanted to address the idea. I don't know if anybody has questioned or thought about possible usage. The only thing I can tell you is, since I was a secretary and sending out newsletters, and we kept growing all the time, we ended up with me mailing out a hundred and fifty newsletters a month to members that paid to go out there and shoot, and they were out there for many time early in the morning till sun going down at night, as which was already addressed and may have to be addressed otherwise. I'm basically just telling you the interest is there. As somebody that was directly involved with that, I'm just very excited about the idea we might have someplace to go. The ranges aren't as critical as far as distance as some people might think. The best we can do would be the best we can do. You know, if you can come up with a thousand, more power to you. If you can't, get us something. That's all we're looking for, is someplace to go. There's a lot of people out there that will utilize it, I'll guarantee you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address it? Okay. We have motion second. All those favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carried. Hearing an action on the following alcohol license applications, the bottom two have been, have been withdrawn, so will only act on one. On the application to transfer RB thirty-one twenty-four retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License from Jeremy Jensen doing business as Jensen Capital Development LLC to Austin LLC doing business as Corn Palace M ten-oh-one South Burr Street.
Mayor and Council Chief Coster from the Police Department, we have no concerns of this application and recommend approval.
Motion by Mr. Allen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sabers. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? All those favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carried. Action to approve applications for renewal of alcohol licenses. Mr. Coster, got any issues?
No issues.
Motion by Mr. McArdle.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rice. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address any of these? All those favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carried. Action to approve application for renewal of medical cannabis license. Mr. Johnson?
So this would be the, the time and place for renewal on the various cannabis licenses that we've already issued. You can see in the staff report, we have three dispensary licenses that were issued, one to FST, FSST Farms LLC, which is the Flanders Ante Tribe. We have BWD Mitchell, which is in the old Runnings Building, and then Raftus Enterprise Mitchell LLC, which is the one down in the Walmart area. There's also one cultivation license on there, which is also at the old Runnings Building. What you do not see on here is the Genesis Farms dispensary that you just approved at the last meeting, because that was issued for next calendar year. And then you also don't see on this list the manufacturing license that is coming up next on the agenda. So these are just the renewals. The only thing of note on any of these renewals is on the tribes, they did have a minor change to their floor plan, where they were gonna try to add some windows on a side. They're gonna try to do it in a way that complies with the ordinance. If they can't, then they're just gonna not put those windows in.
Justin, are these renewals, do these folks have to pay a annual fee again? Or did we waive that?
We waived it.
So we have not, at this point, taken any formal action on that. We were previously given guidance not to require them to pay that fee, because we were under the understanding that council was going to consider waiving the renewal fee this year, since people haven't been able to get up and operating yet. So with the renewals that you approved tonight, that would be another thing for, for council to act on, is whether that renewal fee is going to be waived.
And when, when would you do that?
That would be tonight.
Part of your motion.
When, when you do the approval, I'd make that part of the motion.
Any word on the one that was not approved that, yeah, down by Patzer?
DLJ, I forget the name of the LLC. Might just be DLJ LLC. They were, initially went through the process to have that location in the Patzer area, kinda back behind Corona Village. Council did not ultimately approve the, I believe it was conditional use at that location, or it might have been a variance. Either way, that was not approved at the time, but council did grant them leave to be able to amend that application for a different location through the end of this year, and at this point, the applicant is not returned with, I guess, an updated application or another location that they would be moving forward with. So they'd still have a couple meetings here to try and do so, but at this point, we haven't heard anything.
Entertained a motion.
I'll move approval.
With waiving the fees.
Yeah, with waiving the fees.
Yeah, motion by Mr. McArdle, including waiving the fees. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Mr. Allen. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? Okay. All those favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carried.
Got one comment. It'll be interesting to see if they proceed in the future with just medical, since the recreational got voided down. That'll be interesting to watch.
It'll be interesting to see what the federal government does here coming up too. Action to approve application to BWX Mitchell LLC for a medical cannabis manufacturing license at fourteen hundred South Burr. Mr. Johnson?
All right. So this is, as I just referenced, another operation at the old Runnings Building. You already approved the, the cultivation portion and the dispensary renewal with your last agenda item. This is basically that middle component of manufacturing, where they're going from actual plant to finished product, so. Staff has reviewed all of the materials. I don't believe that there were any concerns pointed out by staff, other than our standard conditions of completing the building permit process and passing a fire inspection before they begin operation. And I think with that, we can open it up to questions.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Chark. Further discussion?
Yeah. Question, okay, so going through, there's a dispensary license, a cultivation license, a manufacturing license, and a testing license, correct? So they've applied for three of the four?
Right. And I believe that they cannot do the testing, because it needs to be...
Separate.
Separate facility.
It needs to be a more independent operation, so.
So they, places that get into this would end up contracting with somebody for testing evaluation.
Yep, and at this point, I don't know who they'd be utilizing to do that. Nobody has come forward with a plan to do testing in Mitchell yet.
Okay.
That's not testing. Anybody know, any audience wish to address this? Okay. All those favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carried. Action to award lives say lane utility project number twenty-two-one-twenty-five. Mr. Schrader?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Council. Bids were opened on November sixteenth in City Hall Council Chambers at one-thirty. Four bids were received, with H&amp;W Contracting being the low bid of one million, one hundred twenty-three thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars and twenty cents. The engineer's estimate was nine hundred and thirty thousand. There is a bid tabulation, a detail attached for your information. Phil Gundelson, professional engineer with Infrastructure Design Group, has reviewed the bids. They're complete, and he does recommend award. Total project cost, with all soft costs, which includes the engineering and contingency, is totaled to be one point four million. We will need some funds from our enterprise, with water being twenty-five thousand and sanitary sewer being two hundred and eighty-five thousand, and staff. We can, we can absorb that within our budgets for next year, and staff does recommend awarding the project to H&amp;W Contracting LLC for the listed amount. And this would be approved contingent on DNR approval. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Move to approve.
Based on DNR approving as well?
I want to have discussion after motion.
Oh, okay. Motion by Mr. Rice?
Second.
Second by Mr. Branton. Go ahead, Mr. Rice.
Okay. Yeah, so when would the DNR approval be available?
It's usually typically within the month.
Oh, that quick.
They basically just need to review the bids, make sure they're complete.
And the, okay.
Yep.
The timing then, if this is approved, would be next construction season?
Yep. Completion date is October of twenty-three.
Oh.
Okay. Further discussion?
H&amp;W, we've done business with them before?
Yep. They did phases two and three of the Sandborne project.
Okay.
They currently have the west water tower piping improvements of that valve. They, they've done a lot of work for the city. They're, they're a good contractor.
They from Sioux Falls?
Yes.
Yeah, didn't they do some stuff over on First Station?
They, they might have. I know they just did the daily drive lift station. They've done a lot of work in town.
Anybody in the audience wish to address this? Okay. Any other discussion from council? All those favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carried. Action to approve amendment number one to agreement twenty-two-zero-thirty-nine landfill cell number four, construction project twenty-two-one-eight with Helms Associates and Associates. Mr. Schrader?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Council. This contract was originally entered into on October fifth of twenty-twenty for design bidding and construction. On this project this year, we found some sand pockets, more than what we'd like, and with that, it was recommended that a clay liner be added to the bottom of the floor. That was not anticipated. During consent, we approved a change order to that contractor for roughly two hundred thousand dollars. So with that, this is providing additional services for Helms to observe that work that was extra. The new contract amount would be two hundred ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred twenty-five dollars and fourteen cents, with project contingency of fifty thousand, and with that, the project is essentially complete, so I feel good with that contingency number. So I'd recommend approving the amendment to Helms.
So I'd recommend approving the amendment to Helms and Associates.
Motion by Mr. McArdle.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rice. Further discussion?
So the, the clay liner is in already, or?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, to move forward before winter, we gave them prior approval, because we, it needs to be done. Some, the state.
Somehow.
Approved it, yep. And we're still within our original budget, because the bid did come in so far under, which is surprising for the construction season we've had. So I mean, that's good, so we're still under our original.
Okay.
Budgeted amount.
Joe, I've been out there quite a bit here in the last couple months. And the way north one, do you call that cell one? Up against the lagoon?
Yeah, I believe it's one, two, three, four, working from west to east.
Okay. How much higher do they go than, you know, than the berm that you drive in on? Because all of a sudden, that way west, northwest corner is really high.
It can, it can go quite a ways up. I don't, I don't have the footage.
Have you seen the one between Chamberlain and Pukwana? It's huge.
So I mean, we're continuing to move south. That slope will continue up. So I mean, it'll continue to grow even as we expand ourselves to the south.
Huh, didn't know that.
Yep.
Is that a second sledding option?
Years down the road, years down the road.
That's a methane gas collection plant. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all, anybody in the audience who should address this? All those favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carried. Action to approve agreement 820250, design and bidding of SRF Water and Sewer Project with, with projects with SPN and Associates. Mr. Schrader.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Council. This is approving a contract with SPN Associates for design and bidding services for four of our SRF ARPA projects. Those projects are the Olmen Lift Station, North Harmon Sanitary Sewer, West Harmon Water Main Loop, and the 12th and 13th Water Main Loop. These projects were previously identified and facility plans completed by SPN. Total project costs are estimated at 4.882 million. The contract with SPN is an hourly not to exceed amount of $271,200. And staff does recommend approval. And I can answer any specific questions to any of the projects if you haven't.
Motion by Mr. Allen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rice. Further discussion?
And it's not on?
Go ahead.
Yeah, question, what?
Go ahead.
Oh, the lift station at 23rd and Olman, that's a separate?
That is under contract already.
Already, okay.
And that's also part of our SRF ARPA.
But it was run under a separate?
Correct, under a separate contract.
Oh, we had that, yeah, okay.
Yep, that's actually.
One out, the stinky ones.
Well.
That one's almost ready for bid.
That's a bad one. Suzie lives near that one. That's a bad one.
I just wanted to make sure that that one's, that that one's in the system.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
That one for sure needs to be fixed.
Joe said that that one's about ready to be bid.
Okay.
That project.
Because the, the timing on, so the North Harmon and Airport is a 2425 construction.
Correct.
Loop on 12th is a 23.
We believe that the water main projects will be able to be completed in '23. We'll probably still give a '24 completion date, just to allow better numbers if possible. And what we've seen when we bid those two is if someone can fit it in this year, we get a better number then. If they can't, then we get the better number in '24.
Okay.
I think our live say bids show that there's still some contractors interested, but there's obviously some contractors that are full, because you can see the discrepancies between the numbers.
Okay.
Okay. Further questions, comments? Anybody in the audience who should address this? All those favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carried. Action to approve agreement 820251, South Waste Water Plant Phase Two, project 20211 with HDR Engineering. Mr. Schrader.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Council. This contract is with HDR Engineering for design and bidding of our South Waste Water Treatment Plant improvements. That total project cost is estimated at 30 million. The total project cost for the design and bidding services is $1,908,860. Like I, like I said, our current budget is 30 million. Our ARPA and our South Dakota DNR grant was roughly 17 million, with an SRF loan close to 13 million. I can go into the improvements in further detail if you want me to. There is a representative from HDR here. But city staff does recommend approving the agreement with HDR in an hourly not to exceed basis at the identified amount.
Motion by Mr. Allen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience who should address this? All those favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carried. Action to approve agreement 820252AE, Agreement with Shimmer Regarding Indoor Pool. Mr. Johnson.
All right, well, I kind of gave a brief rundown in the staff report on this one. Obviously, the indoor pool has been undergoing some repairs. Initially, back in July, when that work was starting, the intention was going to be, or the thought at that time, was that it was just going to need a replastering. Well, they, during that process, they were going to do some testing to try to identify why we were having the delamination issue. And then during the process of testing, and then taking the old plaster off, they discovered a couple of other issues that we've been trying to identify solutions for and make sure that there aren't any other major problems that need to be addressed. So this would be the architectural and engineering work that needs to be, or that has been going on and will need to continue to go on before that actual repair work can get undertaken. I can't give a firm timeline at this time, but hopefully, in the near future, after we approve this agreement, we should be able to see this work starting and then get a timeline for when we'd actually be reopening them.
Justin, who did the engineering initially?
Back during the construction, it was through MSH Architects, which is now Shimmer.
Same folks?
Yes. Yep, essentially.
So did they not do a good job the first time?
No, there's a reason we need to keep them on board, is so that they don't get dropped off the liability issue if something does happen, is caused by them.
It's already happened, huh?
Well, it happened with the construction. So the construction was what was bad, in the, in the, the installation went wrong. They also carry some liability for design, should something be wrong with the design. If we go back and fix this without keeping them involved, it wipes out any, any liability they may have.
So it's safe to say it wasn't anything that we did wrong?
Correct.
So are we going to ask for the $27,000?
We are.
Okay.
We are going to push to get the money back, and as this all works through, wherever it works through.
Yeah, and obviously, there, there hasn't been an agreement on that point yet. But that is the intention, is to recoup those costs in some way. But, you know, in, in the matter of speeding this thing along, it's something that we need to proceed with immediately, so that the work can get started. Right.
John, I was asked the same question. Well, if the same guys did it before, and we're going to have them do it again, what's going to prevent a mishap from happening again? But if the, if the design documents are held and owned by Shimmer, we have to be able to use those design documents in order to have the, have the fix done. And if we don't, then that liability is gone. So I asked the same question of, can we get the $27,000 back at some point? I was also asked if we're still pursuing the loss of use aspect in any way.
We're pursuing everything we can. We don't know to what extent we can recoup it all, but.
If we can recoup any.
Right. But we are working towards that line. So far, things have been amicable. That could change at any minute. They intend to get started on this.
Before the end of the year, if we go?
By Monday, I think.
It's possible that they could start as early as next week.
And then they hope to have it done, I hate to say dates, because I remember, mid-January.
After the 1st of the year.
You know, yep, it would be up and running about mid-January, so that the swim team is hoping to hold a swim meet February 1st. They have a drop dead date of December 1. Pitts Construction is aware of that. They're the ones who have set this schedule. If they start Monday, they feel they can be done and up and running by mid-January. Anything I missed?
I don't think so.
Mr. Johnson's been handling most of this for obvious reasons.
Yeah, so, well, you know, the idea is to get the work started, do everything that we need to be able to get the work started and have that work start as soon as possible, and then argue about some of the rest of this after the work is done and we're back up and running.
Correct. Motion by Mr. McArdle. Second by Mr. Sabers. Further discussion?
One quick question.
Go ahead.
So we're, we obviously agree we need to use the same architect. Do we need to use the same subcontractor?
Pitts is not using the same subcontractor.
Thank you.
At least not at this point. I don't see them going back to them either. Okay, further discussion? Anybody in the audience who should address this? Mr. Nelson, you got any comments on this?
I'm pleased to see things moving along. As slowly as it may be, I'm pleased.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carried. Second reading on ordinance, oh, 202216, 2023 Annual Appropriations Ordinance. Ms. Elline.
I don't have anything new to add from the last overviews that we did, both during the work sessions and the first hearing. I did hand out one piece of new information on the table. I tried to include that in our capital improvement project, and the file size was just too large, and it caused it to crash. So that is our map of our chip seal projects for next year. So still working on trying to get that incorporated into that final document that we will provide to you after tonight's hearing. I can answer any questions that you have. As you saw in the sales tax report in the consent agenda items, we continue to be above where we were last year, although at a much smaller amount compared to at the beginning of the year. But we are still above last year's level. And next year's, excuse me?
Was it 8%?
Correct. Right now, we're 8%. At the beginning of the year, we were like 23% up, so, or not the beginning, the first quarter. And our budget next year is still below what collections have been this year for revenue, so we should be okay even with a downturn next year, so. Any questions that you have, but I won't go through the whole narrative unless you want me to again.
I'll move approval on second reading.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rice.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion?
Yeah, Stephanie, if I remember the sales tax amount left for next year was like 3.2% increase?
Yes.
Something like a 3-ish? But that's over this year's budget amount, not this year's action.
The increase that we did was over this year's budget, not over what this year's collections were. So we are still going to be below what this year's collections are. Which we try to do that so that you don't bring in more revenue than obviously we have planned in expenses, and then you end up spending out of your savings.
With as many capital projects as we have, we have plenty.
You're going to have some come over budget, I'm sure.
Optimism, I like. Okay. Further discussion? Is there anything, anybody in the audience who wants to address this? All those favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carried. Motion to adopt.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Rice. Second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience who wants to just address this? Roll call.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Dosher. McArdle. Barrington.
Aye.
Allen.
Do you have to think about it?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Hearing in first reading on ordinance, oh, 202218, the Mendy Woodland Heights Plan Unit Development. Mr. Jennings.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Planning Commission recommended approval of this for zero with three absent. We did receive one letter for it and three against it. There were a total of 10 letters sent out during Planning Commission. Discussion from the letters that were sent out against was, there's other lots in the area for duplexes to be built. But Planning Commission said that when they originally did their plan, times have changed since then, when it was done 10 or 15 years ago.
So which lots available already have duplexes or can have duplexes versus this one, something across the street?
Okay, so when they originally did this whole development down here, everything on capital, which is a few blocks to the west, was all for duplexes. The corner one got rezoned to a single-family dwelling on that one. In this area here, everything on the outside of Cottonwood Circle was originally zoned as just single-family.
Outside of?
The outside was single-family.
Inside of the circle?
Was up to 12 units. You have already rezoned the 10, 11, and 12 on the outside to multifamily dwelling as well. There's.
Those are the ones down on the.
On the highway. Yep, yep. So this would bring one more in as a multifamily. They've, we've had two duplexes permits taken out within the last month or two for inside the circle. And so there's only, I think, three or four more lots inside the circle. But there are also single-family dwellings inside the circle as well. Yes.
Stephanie, that tiff has paid off, isn't it?
Yeah. Last year, right? South of Olman? I don't remember when. It's just all last year, yeah.
Please, on first reading.
Okay, motion by Mr. Allen.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Charks. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience who should address it? All those favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carried.